For which stands one nation, under God, united as one with the religion and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Spectacles, yeah.
Working counselor.
Let me get that situated. First announcement, just to let everyone know that this is, tonight's meeting is actually being streamed live on YouTube as opposed to Facebook Live. There is a link on the town Facebook page to get you to that if you're tuning in at home. And hopefully we'll have continued video and sound that'll be more consistent to what we've had in the past. All right, so again, thank you, everyone, for coming here tonight. Tonight's a special meeting, again, in the process of making plans to find a new town manager for the town of Bridgewater. We'll start with citizens' open forum. Again, let me state that due to Massachusetts Open Meeting Law requirements, discussions will not take place during the public comment periods. If appropriate, responses to questions and concerns will be given by the town manager at a future town council meeting. And please keep it to three minutes or less, and please identify yourself and address when you come up to the podium.
All righty, good evening. I am Tina Larson, 40 Amherst Avenue. I am speaking tonight on behalf of the cultural council. I was the chair for two years before I was elected as town clerk and can no longer serve. So I am here tonight appealing to get some more volunteers to get onto the council. The state allocates lottery funds to each town to be granted by the council, and last year Bridgewater received $22,000. The council reviews the grants requests in about mid-October and votes on who meets the criteria that the local council has established and how much to give them. And as a direct grant organization, the paperwork is done once the grantees accept the monies. The council does important work and requires very little time compared to a lot of the other councils. It is the only committee or commission that makes decisions without any interference or ratification by any other groups. It is a great way to get involved in your town. You do not need to be an artist, or you do not have to have any experience working with cultural groups to be a part of the cultural council. Please reach out to me at the Clerk's Office or to Josh McGrath at the Town Manager's Office for more information about the appointment process. We would love to get at least two more people on that council, approved, ratified by you guys, and in place before people start applying in September. If anyone here knows of anyone who's interested in applying for those grants, you can start looking for the grant applications in September. And there is a meeting, a Zoom meeting on Thursday, September 5th, for anyone who's looking to apply. It is massculturalcouncil.org-localcommunities. And if President Perry, I still have time?
Yes, you do.
Okay. I'd like to report that the Clerk's Office has mailed out four, sorry, 3,000 early ballots for the primary. And anyone wishing to vote early in person, it will be in this room starting on Saturday, the 24th, from 9:00 to 5:00, and then that week, Monday through Friday, Monday through Thursday, 8:00 to 4:00, and then 8:00 to 1:00 on Friday. The primary is the day after the holiday. So hopefully you've either voted in person, by mail, or come the day of the election. Thank you.
Thank you, Tina. Anyone else? Mr. Wood?
Hi, everybody, this is a follow-up. Bill Wood, 388 Hayward Street. I think a lot of people around the room know me. I'm following up on the email I sent you yesterday. I'm here tonight to offer my services to fill the position as interim town clerk, town manager. You've seen my resume and know that I have all of the required skills to fill the role successfully. I've heard that the acting assistant town manager can only work part-time. I don't know if that's true or false, but if it's true, you really need a full-time person in place. As a past town councillor and a 44-year resident of the town of Bridgewater, with ties that go back much further, I have in-depth knowledge of projects past, present, and future. And the town council needs a steady hand at the wheel while it searches for Mr. Dutton's replacement. Your search is likely to extend into the budget season for the next fiscal year. My budget expertise and collaborative approach will ensure that Bridgewater remains on stable footing during the early process until it can be handed back to the new town manager.
Jason.
Jason. In 2010, I was standing in Washington, DC, when I decided to run for the town council with the desire to get the charter form of government on its feet. I am here today with the same desire, but from the executive side, to ensure that it follows the best practices. In 2010, I also stood in front of the Old Town Hall taking a picture with the CPC sign for the renovation. 14 years later, the building is still vacant and abandoned as far as the community is concerned. I believe that in the short term that we can make a difference there, too. So this is what we can do together. And when I say "together," I mean a collaborative approach during the interim period. The last set of goals were set in 2021. I couldn't find anything more recent, that's what the website said. I prefer when I coach staff to adopt SMART goals. SMART is an acronym for, for, SMART, yes. I'll come back to that. But the goals are going to become your hiring criteria. You need to know what the goals of the town are and be able to articulate those to anyone interested in running for the full-time position. And they need to be able to respond about how they might fulfill those goals, either from experience or knowledge about the town. SMART stands for specific, measurable, achievable, realistic, and timely. And only when you have measurements can you do that. Two more items, Kevin. I want to also improve communication. I coached Dutton on how to send out the weekly report. He wasn't doing it, and I went in and sat down with him. We need to anticipate citizens' questions. We need to have one-on-one with councillors. We need project statuses that the citizens don't need to guess at. And we need to improve transparency. We need to improve the town website with current news. We should have a cellphone app. Volunteer opportunities need broader recognition. And finally, and I'll wrap it up here, I heard the other night to review all policies. And that's a good thing, because the town manager has set quite a few policies that the town council didn't have input into. And I think it'd be great during the process to review those. Anyway, I ask that you keep an open mind and consider me if you're looking at other alternatives, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. Anybody else like to come up and speak? Pat, come on up.
This is perfect. Good evening. Pat Neary, Lakeside Drive. I've been speaking with some other residents in town, and I have a few suggestions regarding the current town manager situation. And if Mr. Dutton was here, I would thank him for his service. Town manager's job, as you know, can be overwhelming. Mr. Dutton plans to leave in September, but we should consider having a temporary acting town manager now. If we have someone that could step in right now, Mr. Dutton could leave right now. And I anticipate that his salary would be paid up to the date he leaves in September. Ms. Robinson's resume is quite impressive. However, I understand that she can only be employed for a limited number of hours per week. We need to have full-time people that work in person. Merrily Hunt's name has come up in the discussion, if she's even willing to serve as a temporary acting town manager. Please consider this option or a similar option. We need someone full-time, in person, without job sharing. This should also apply to our assistant town manager. I hope you will consider these suggestions, and I thank you for listening.
Thank you, Pat. Anybody else like to come up and speak? Going once, going twice. All right, very good. Well, again, thank you all for coming. Going to the next line item, appointments. We're actually going to postpone this line item tonight. As was pointed out, Mr. Dutton's not here. So Blythe Robinson is sitting on his behalf. But based on feedback that we're hearing from varied parties looking to have additional options to choose from in regards to the interim town manager position, we'll postpone, number one, the discussion item that we had, Acting Interim Assistant Town Manager, Blythe Robinson. We'll postpone that till next meeting. But we'll also ask for anyone, as some people mentioned tonight, that they were interested in being appointed to the position of interim town manager, to submit their letter of interest and a resume to the Town Council Secretary by 10:00 on this Friday, just so we can put together an agenda for next meeting, which is the 13th. And at that point, if anyone interested, we'll bring on up. We'll have them make introductions, presentations, and open up questions from councillors. And we do need to make a decision on an interim, so we will have a vote at a particular meeting to put an interim town manager in place, as he will be leaving, as mentioned, at the beginning of September. So I will just postpone that this evening. If you have a question.
Yes, on that issue. We were scheduled to have the sewer presentation that night, could we?
That's been postponed already.
Okay, good, thank you.
Yep. Any other questions on that from town councillors? Okay. So, that being done, we do not have any additional presentations this evening. So we'll move on to discussions, which is on the composition of the preliminary screening ad hoc committee. So I'll just, I want to read a little introduction to it. And we're going to be having some open discussion with it as a council, and hopefully we can come to a decision on it this evening. But as of our last meeting, the town council voted on the formation of a preliminary screening ad hoc committee, and now we have to decide the composition of that committee. Prior history has shown, in the past, it was composed of four council members when Mr. Dutton was hired, and that committee narrowed down five applicants at the time to three, and those candidates were interviewed publicly in front of the entire town council. Recent discussions have had suggestions of still having four people, up to as many as nine people. In this form of government, the council members are elected representatives of the town residents who have undergone various training in ethics and privacy matters and personnel matters when it comes to hiring a town manager. It is the purview and responsibility of the town council to make that hire. It is also the responsibility of council members to hear the wants and desires of their constituents and use that information as a guide to make informed decisions on hiring a new town manager. If an outside firm is hired to bring potential candidates to the table, part of the process will include public input sessions and/or surveys to make sure that we get the feelings and wants of the citizens of Bridgewater in a new town manager. They will also do this with the town council, as well as review what questions should and should not be asked during the public interview process. At this point, I don't feel it's prudent that we add any persons from the general public or hired department heads to be on this ad hoc committee for the following reasons. Council members are indemnified by the town and do have legal protection if any mistakes are made at all through the process. The general public is not and could be personally held liable if any mistakes are made in regards to confidentiality of applicants or any other HR violations during the interview process. Sirman heads will at some point be answering to the new town manager as their boss. Therefore, their involvement in the interview process, oh, lost my glasses, of the town manager could be viewed potentially as a conflict of interest, depending on who is hired. Therefore, I would then recommend and ask for a motion from the council, and then a second for discussion, as again, we need to discuss this as a council, on a recommendation of a five-member preliminary screening subcommittee made up of four town council members and one seated Bridgewater member of the Bridgewater School Committee. And that person will be an elected person with training and indemnification, as I mentioned earlier. They will be a representative of 55% of the town budget and will create an odd-numbered committee that will ensure a decisive vote on potential candidates to bring in front of the town council. And when those candidates are brought in front of the town council, again, it's a completely open process, and everything will be transparent in that process. So again, on that recommendation, do I hear any motion from council members on a five-member committee?
So moved.
So moved. I hear a second for discussion, second for discussion. Anyone have any discussion? Ms. Ms. McGrath?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to question through you to the town attorney.
Okay, go ahead.
So our charter in Chapter 2, Article 1, Section 3B talks about the town manager. And it states, "Town manager appoints all department heads, officers, constables, and employees except persons serving directly under the town council." Therefore, could we, the town council, form a group to be presented with the ad hoc committee during the process of hiring a firm and screening?
I'm not following the question.
It says that "except persons serving directly under the town council."
What section of the charter are you looking at?
It's Chapter 2, Article 1, Section 3B, number one.
Yeah, let me get to that, just so we're on the same page. So you said Section 2, Article 1?
It's Chapter 2, Article 1, Section 3B, number 1. And it starts with, "Town manager appoints all department heads, officers..."
Under town manager responsibilities?
It's about the town, it's about the town manager.
So it's under Section 3 pertinent to the town manager?
Yeah, Section 3B.
Okay, let me just get to that, then. I'm in your section, pertinent to you all.
I got to get this thing printed out.
That's fine.
It's 398 pages.
So 3-dash, "Elected officials" is Article 3 of the charter?
Yeah. It's in Chapter 2, Article 1.
So Chapter 2. So Article 2?
Yeah, Article 1. It's Chapter 2, Article 1.
So it's Article 1. So you always start with the article, okay. So Article 1, yep?
Section 3B.
There is no Section 3B under the charter. Are you thinking of the Admin Code, maybe? The Administrative Code?
Maybe.
We can look at that as well.
Okay, I could look it up while you talk to the others.
Well, why don't you give me an idea of the question?
Yeah, what is exactly the question?
And then maybe I can...
So the question, so it states that the town manager appoints all department head, officers, constables, and employees "except persons serving directly under the town council." So if a group, could we make a group that is serving under us, appoint those people?
That's why I'm confused, because Section 4-3, under the charter, which controls, obviously, the charter, Section B talks about boards, committees, and agencies. And it says basically, "Except as otherwise provided by the charter, the town manager shall appoint all boards, committees, and agencies."
So that's...
"All appointed boards and committees shall be residents of the town. All appointments of boards and committees and agencies, as defined within the Administrative Code, shall be subject to the ratification of the town council. The town manager shall form a citizen's advisory..." yada, yada, yada. So that's the section that relates to appointments. There is also an ad hoc committee section that's under the Administrative Code, which is what you're creating. So you're creating what's called an ad hoc committee. An ad hoc committee is a committee that's created for a temporary period of time for a specific purpose.
I'll find it, because it doesn't talk about ad hocs there. I'll find it while everyone else is talking.
Yeah, okay.
And just for clarification, I do have that information. That's page 53 of the...
Is it the Admin Code?
Of the Admin Code, yes.
Oh, okay.
And under multiple member bodies and ad hoc committees. Paragraph 2, "The Bridgewater Town Council may, from time to time, based upon passage by majority vote of its membership, establish ad hoc committees to assist the town council in carrying out the council's responsibilities," which this applies. "Ad hoc committees shall be limited to a particular subject area and serve only in that capacity for a specified period of time. Appointments to these ad hoc committees shall be made by the town manager, subject to ratification by the town council."
Right.
So that is...
That's how ad hoc committees are created. So there is another section in the code that deals with committees that you all create on, as your permanent committees. So the process by which you create your permanent committees is different than the process by which ad hoc committees are created.
Correct.
Mr. President?
Yes, Ms. Ellinbrook?
Yes, I would like to point out that potentially, we've got a conflict of interest situation here. Okay? You're having the town manager, who is currently in the position, appointing the people for the town manager? I mean, it's like you appoint the people...
The exiting town manager is appointing an ad hoc committee to allow us to help find a new town manager. I don't know if there's a conflict of interest there.
Oh, so he's still, he's still operating, okay.
Yes, the town manager is still the town manager until September 4th.
Yes, that's another matter, but all right. I would also like to point out a point of clarification. In terms of types of coverage available to municipalities, general liability coverage happens to cover supervised and unsupervised volunteer workers. So we can get citizens on this committee because our insurance will cover them, if we have proper insurance, and I'm sure we will, to include our citizens.
Well, the citizens, as I mentioned, are going to be part of an open process if we bring in outside sources and to bring in candidates to the town, there's going to completely, at least one to two open sessions where the public is going to be invited to share whatever input that they have. I think that's better suited to get their points across of what they're looking for as a town manager.
I think citizens, excuse me, Mr. President, thank you for indulging me, I'm sorry I interrupted. I think citizens need to be in a voting position on the ad hoc committee. Merely giving advice to the committee ain't cutting it in this town.
Again, the...
So we need citizens on the committee in a voting capacity in terms of recommending to the full council.
Okay, and again, this is going to be up for a vote and discussion by the council. But again, based on our town government, as is established, the hire of a new town manager is the purview of the town council.
So we also have the option to not ratify some of the appointments?
Ratification of the appointments, I'm not sure if it goes individually or as a whole. Mr. Rollins, can you clarify?
No, each, absolutely, that you all have the ability to not ratify appointments.
Yeah, that can get nasty. We don't want to engage in such a thing.
Well, again, the ratification usually is brought up as, again, in any other appointment process in front of the council, and it is voted on by the council as far as approve or deny, so...
Lindy has a comment.
That's all right, Mr. Lindy?
Mr. President, I'm wondering two things. I'd like the motion read back, so I'm clear on the motion. And also, I'd like, I don't know if you know the answer to this question, or somebody else might know. Have we had any response to the RFP for a search from search firms?
Oh, yes, we've had with some, again, right now, just trying to establish the ad hoc committee, but there has been response to the RFP.
Because it was due August 1st, so, okay.
Yeah, they have their response, yes. Any other councillors?
I think, I think the assistant town manager might just have some information on that I just asked.
Okay.
Okay, Ms. Robinson?
Thank you. I believe we received at least two proposals. There may have been a third, but I was not involved in the opening of them. I'd have to check with staff in the morning.
Thank you, Ms. Robinson.
And could I get the motion read back?
Yes, I could, so the motion would be, let's see, that we would establish a five-member preliminary, oh, sorry, preliminary screening subcommittee made up of four town council members and one seated Bridgewater member of the Bridgewater School Committee.
Would the school committee have to vote on that?
No, that's an appointment, again, by the town manager.
By the town manager, okay.
Any other questions, or discussion?
Well, actually...
Yes, Ms. Ellinbrook?
Thank you, Mr. President. I can make a charter objection motion, if need be. Now, what that is, is that's Charter, Section 2.7C, I have it here on my computer. And that is, I have to make an objection before a vote is taken.
We're just trying to establish an ad hoc committee.
Okay, and if the vote is affirmative, we postpone it to the next meeting. So before our vote is being taken, I am putting in an objection, a charter objection.
Advice from councillor, Mr. Rollins?
Is this on the pending motion? You're making a charter objection?
Yes.
Okay.
Which is a superior motion.
It is?
Mm-hmm.
So is that to delay this till the next meeting, or what do you...
I think, I think...
We'll take a look at...
The entire...
We'll take a look at the Roberts rules, too, just...
The entire committee needs to be rethought.
Well, again, this is, this is a discussion where we're supposed to be discussing the committee. So if you have more arguments on a nine-member committee, please state your arguments to have a nine-member committee.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. President. I think we need to have three members of the council. Mr. President, Mr. Vice President, I think Mr. Lindy is very qualified, I'm not looking for myself. I think we need three citizens, which are very qualified and have been involved for many years. And then we need important department heads. For example, our police and fire, highway, things of that, that address infrastructure and safety needs. All of this needs to be questioned to the candidates for town manager. So we've got to have good representation on this ad hoc committee.
Sorry, have we addressed the objection yet? So there needs to be a two, the Roberts rules essentially says a two-thirds vote against consideration is required to sustain the objection. So the objection was made, now two-thirds of you have to vote to sustain that objection, meaning agree. So if two-thirds of you don't agree with the objection, then it fails.
Then it fails, and we can continue the discussion, okay.
What section?
Can we not have citizens talk?
Section 2-7 subsection C. And this is, "On the first occasion that a question on adoption of a measure is put to the town council, if a single member objects to the taking of the vote, the vote shall be postponed until the next meeting of the town council, whether regular or special."
Yes, but again, as you mentioned, the word "measure," wouldn't that measure refer to Attorney Rollins to an order or of some sort of ordinance?
It's typically a resolution, an order, or ordinance.
Correct, not exactly the formation of an ad hoc committee.
So what, an ad hoc committee is not under what, a bylaw?
It's an appointment.
I believe it's under...
This isn't an order, this isn't a resolution.
So the jurisdiction is under the charter, or the bylaws, or the ordinances?
You all can vote to postpone it, I don't think there's any issue with that.
All right, so I have to act on that motion being brought forth, Mr. Rollins?
I think we're, I think we're operating under Roberts rules that essentially says a two-thirds vote against consideration is required to sustain the charter, to sustain the objection to this particular question.
Okay.
It's not a charter objection relative to an order, a resolution, or an ordinance. It's a, it's an objection under discussions, which is frankly not even a, not a measure, if we're being honest.
Right.
So I think we follow Roberts rules. And I think what Roberts rule says is a two-thirds vote against consideration is required to sustain the objection.
Okay. So a yes vote means it's in favor of the objection, and a no vote is against the objection, correct? correct?
Two, so, two-thirds sustains the objection, meaning agrees...
Right, so, a yes vote would be agree to the charter objection.
Agrees to postpone it, essentially.
Right. A yes vote means we postpone it.
It takes two-thirds to postpone it.
And, yeah, and a no vote would mean that we would continue the conversation.
Mr. Lindy has a comment?
Thank you.
Mr. Lindy?
May I ask for a roll call vote on it?
Yes, we will get a roll call vote on that. Yes, Ms. McGrath?
Can you just clarify me, because you got, everyone's been going back and forth, what is exactly we're rejecting to?
Right now, Ms. Ellenberg has filed a charter objection to postpone discussion or, or taking action on the establishment of a five-member, which is the motion in front of us, a five-member ad hoc committee, to obviously, the, the next meeting, I guess. And then, we'd have to postpone that. If, if you vote yes, then we would postpone the, the motion and the vote to the next meeting. If you vote no, we would continue with the discussion. And is that spoken appropriately, Mr. Rollins, what I say? Okay.
It is, or you, or you could debate the main issue.
All right. Or debate the, well, again, anyone have any further comments on the charter objection?
I have one more question, we'll follow up. So, why are we postponing it? Because the town manager appoints the, the person, so why are we...
Well, I'll direct that back to Ms. Ellenberg. What is the reason for your...
The composition, the composition, who is on the ad hoc committee, is what this discussion is about.
Yeah, but the town manager appoints who's on it, so...
Yes, but we are setting the parameters with this measure.
We're discussing the composition, the, the, the motion is for a five-member subcommittee. She's arguing for a nine-member subcommittee, that's why she's trying to postpone.
What difference does it make, it's five or nine? The town manager appoints who's on it. We don't have any control.
Well, we have the option to not ratify if things are outrageous or whatever, but...
Not according to the charter.
But, I think we, what we ought to do is try to set things up the correct way from the start.
Okay. Um...
Mr. President?
Uh, yes, I, Mr. Murphy, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I just have a question for Mr. Rollins. On page 16 of the charter, it says that the town manager does appoint those appointees for the boards and commissions.
Yep.
But it also says the town manager shall form a citizens advisory committee to help in evaluating and selecting those individuals for appointment. Would that require the town manager to set up...
What, what section are you referring to? Is it under the town manager's roles? Is it under the, is it admin code? I mean, there's multiple sections that deal with the appointment of committees.
It's page 16.
Well, I'm online, so...
I am as well.
We, we have a citizen advisory committee. A member of it is actually here in the room tonight. It already exists.
Yeah, there's a five, there's a five-member committee.
So, is it a permanent committee?
So, that advisory committee, the town manager would have to run their appointees by that, that committee, correct?
I, I think that does not, does not relate to the case of an ad hoc committee appointment.
No, it's not mentioned on the...
I defer to council.
There's a separate, are you talking about an ad hoc committee, or are you talking about committees? I, we're, we're getting very in the weeds. You're creating an ad hoc committee. There's a whole section on ad hoc committees in the administrative code. It says exactly how it works.
What if we wanted to create a permanent committee?
To do what?
That would be...
Same thing.
To find a town manager?
Yes.
Yes.
But that's not a permanent role.
Why couldn't it be? And then, we could disband...
Are you gonna be constantly interviewing people to be town managers?
We could disband the committee.
Could be, right?
I, I guess.
It's not, yeah.
I, I suppose we could try to go down that road, but the whole intent of an ad hoc committee is for it to be temporary in nature. So, I guess I don't know the purpose of your permanent committee to interview candidates constantly? I, I guess I don't, what's, what purpose does it serve, once you've hired the town manager? You're gonna keep getting it, you're gonna keep taking in resumes and interviewing people?
It may not, but it's a different path, correct?
But what are you gonna do? I guess that's, I, I guess we could come up with, if you wanna come up with the whole, this is what the committee does, I suppose we could...
And, and does a...
Ms. Ellenberg, you don't have the floor, it's the conversation between Mr. Rollins and...
I'm sorry.
Mr. Murphy?
I mean, depends on what the committee's doing.
I'm only setting an alternative for the council, because clearly, the ad hoc process is not working for folks, so...
Well, I don't think it's the ad hoc per se. I think we have an argument of the composition of it, which is what the discussion is about. So, again, going back to her objection, we should vote on her objection, unless anyone else has any comments on it. I, I, I don't agree that we should go forward with the objections for the sake that we're still having a conversation on the composition of the committee. And if we do take a vote, then if people are not in favor of having five members, then they vote no against the committee.
If, if we're being, if we're being technical about it as well, these really should be coming in the form of some proper legislation. You, you should propose an order. This is what I'm proposing for the ad hoc committee. This is what I'm proposing for the permanent committee. We're doing a lot of discussing. There's no orders before any of you. There is no actual measures anywhere in front of you. So, I, I think, you know, Ms. Ellenberg's point is well-taken in the charter objection, that she probably could make if there was an actual measure, if there was an actual order. So, I think, based on the fact that this doesn't seem like it will go in the normal course, and, and usually, ad hoc committees are, are formed without much, you know, ado, right? We say, the council votes and says, we're gonna do an ad hoc committee. Doesn't seem like this council wants to do that, which is fine, but I think what makes more sense is for each of you, in your roles, to legislate and say, okay, this is an order. I wanna put forth an order that the ad hoc committee will be of this many people consisting of this. And then, you have a formal debate, under the charter, under the rules, about what that is. Because right now, I think a big issue is you're, you're all, you all have opinions, but there's actually nothing before any of you, right? There is no order. There, I think, maybe make an order, maybe you do postpone it.
A motion, a motion can be made, an alternative motion could be made. We have a motion for the five-member before us.
You certainly could debate it now.
An alternative motion can be made.
This is, this is the...
But you, but you made a charter objection, which tells me that you're making it on the idea that you wanna postpone it, right?
I do.
And, you're also making it on the idea that there's an actual measure before you all, which I don't know that there is.
Nothing's formally written. Again, this is a discussion and a motion made to just form an ad hoc committee, and I believe prior ad hoc committees have been formed without the formality of an order. But, again...
That's right.
If we need to potentially go through that route, I just don't wanna have nine councillors sending in nine separate orders for whatever they're looking to do. And how do we sort through that situation?
Yeah, unfortunately, that may be what happens. And, and you all will have to figure that out.
All right.
Yeah, but, Mr. Rollins, that's, that, it's one way of doing things, right? Like, the conversation tonight is to get us all on the same page, so we can put forth one order that we all agree to.
Yeah, that's right.
As opposed to your suggestion of having nine different orders and then coming back and debating.
Well, I, that's not my, that's absolutely not my suggestion.
Well, that was what you just said.
No, that, no. What was said to me was, could we do that? And yes, you absolutely could do that.
All right. So, based on where we're at right now, I say, obviously, we need to take a vote on Ms. Ellenberg's objection, uh, charter objection, which would kill the conversation tonight until the next meeting. Yeah, if you are in agreement with that, we would need a, you would, yes, Ms. Driggles?
I have a question for Counselor Ellenberg. What is the purpose of the delay at this point in time? Don't you think it's more advantageous to continue on with our discussion as a group versus delaying it till next week?
Yes, yes, except the composition of the, of the ad hoc committee, in my view, is very important. I would like this council, right here and now, to hear from the citizens as part of...
That's not part of the discussion.
I know. And that is very objectionable, that our hearings don't allow for the public, but that's another matter.
This isn't a hearing, it's a special meeting and discussion to discuss process. But your motion is killing the process if, if it goes forward. If you want to retract your council objection, we could move forward and have a further discussion on the motion, and you can continue to make your argument for a nine-person committee.
Okay. I'll retract my motion, so we will continue the discussion.
Very well, then. Yes, Ms. McGrath?
I found the section.
Oh, good. That works.
President?
Yes, Ms. Driggles?
I just wanted, the reason why I brought it up was every single constituent that I've spoken to specifically, over the last 10 days, which is 45 people up until this point, one-on-ones with 45 people, about 65, 68 percent, want this to be a council decision. They want this to be a council decision, because they elected us to sit here and represent them. So, when I state that I'm not for a nine-person committee, it's simply because of what my constituents are telling me.
Thank you, Ms. Driggles. Any other comments?
Question?
Yes, Ms. Ellenberg.
Query, query to Ms. Driggles?
Oh, wait a minute, well, please, if, you need to come through the president, so, if you'd like to address her back, I'll give you the floor and say, through you, Mr. President, to Ms. Driggles.
Have any of your constituents said that they are, don't want citizen participation or department head participation?
The majority have said that they want this to be a council decision. So, what I hear in that is regardless of citizen contributions, it should be our main decision. So, I think when you involve outside parties with the actual ad hoc committee, we are setting ourselves up for it to not be a council decision. And that's what the majority of my, that's what the majority of my constituents have expressed to me that they want.
I think the ad hoc...
Hold on, we're not going back and forth, please.
Sorry, sorry. Through the president. I believe the ad hoc committee would be simply making recommendations and voting on who to recommend. We, the council, would have the final vote.
Right. But again, the, again, please, no comments from the audience, please. Again, the goal of that ad hoc committee would be, number one, to establish a procedure to go forward as far as using an outside firm to bring candidates to the, to the council, and/or another procedure, if you so choose. Secondarily, in working with that said firm, or whatever agency we would choose to use, they would bring candidates to the floor, that ad hoc committee is basically screening, as it's described as, a preliminary screening committee, whether they bring 10 names or 15 names, they're going to just bring the top five, top three, whatever they feel the best candidates are, to the floor here in front of the town council and the public, and have an interview process. It's a screening committee. More than likely, as I mentioned to you before, there could be some conflicts of interest if you use department heads. There, I don't know, again, there's gonna be, there's going to be formats in place where the public is going to be brought in and, and have a chance to, to share their thoughts and their views, and their passions of what they're looking for in a town manager. And I think in that format, it's a much better scenario, because more of the public is gonna be able to share their, their thoughts and their, their information. Whether it be one session, two sessions, in a format of a, of a survey, we'll figure it on out. But again, the more people you certainly add to the ad hoc, the more difficult it is potentially to get some decisions to move this, this forward. We are under, you know, we have only a certain amount of time. We don't wanna drag this out for a full year to find a, a new person. So, as, as streamlined as we can make the process, and the simpler we can make the process, the better that I think the process will be, and that's why I'm suggesting what I'm suggesting. Does anybody else have any questions?
Mr. Lindy?
Um, I guess, point of information, the constituents I heard with, and I wanna commend Vice President Murphy for having meetings with constituents, wanted input into this process.
And they will have that input.
I'm not talking about input into the, the public meetings, I'm talking about input on a committee. And I believe Ms. Ellenberg is correct in saying that our insurance company would be able to provide a rider for coverage, okay? I, I, I would...
Can I just interject on this?
I will ask Mr. Rollins his...
It's an integral law, it's the government...
I'd be, I'd be very careful talking about what our insurance company will cover. You, I don't care what the book says, we don't, you don't have the policy, and you're not, you don't make the final determination, so we wanna be very careful telling people what our insurance company will or will not cover. The Massachusetts Tort Claims Act gives the town some ability to shield itself from liability.
Yes.
If you act in an individual capacity, interviewing people, that is on you. So, I wanna be very careful not to tell citizens that they can come onto a search committee and say whatever they want to candidates, and be covered by the town's insurance. That is inaccurate under any circumstance.
Well...
And I, and I understand what you're reading in the book. The book is talking about general liability insurance of municipalities. There are exceptions to coverage in that context, and many, that involve individual actions of people in the employment context. So, I just wanna be careful. This is not an issue of us worrying about the liability. It was a warning to people that are on that committee, that they may be exposing themselves. So, no one's trying to discourage that from happening. And that isn't, that isn't an argument to be made. It's important for people that are on that, asking those questions in that context, to understand what they're protected from and what they're not, but that's up to them to figure out. We are not, as a town, I wanna be abundantly clear, the town of Bridgewater, as the town attorney, is not telling private citizens, right now, that our insurance covers them for actions they take as part of a committee in their own capacity. We are not saying that.
And that is true, and insurance policies can be altered through the president. Excuse me?
You don't have the floor, it was Mr. Lindy's question to the town attorney.
So, um, my, I don't know if this is to the town attorney or to the president, but am I clear that the town manager is selecting the members of this subcommittee, or the town council president?
According to the admin code, it is the appointment of the town manager for the ad hoc committee under the ratification of the town council.
So, so ultimately, you all decide by way of ratification?
So, he comes back with the appointments?
He comes back with a list of appointments?
Which we will probably have at the next meeting, if we decide on the ad hoc committee this evening.
You would do them one by one, and then, you would determine who's appointed and who wasn't, through the ratification process?
What's the process for letting the town manager know that people wanna be on that committee? Or does he just pick?
I'm sure you could let the town manager know. Yeah, there's nothing wrong with that.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Any further discussion? Ms. McGrath?
Yeah, I have one discussion, because you said the candidates would be interviewed in public. So, what if we don't like, none of them want the town managers that they picked out? Do we start all over again?
That is potentially a personal, a possibility. If the candidates we bring to the floor are ones that we don't wanna hire, then we have to basically start the process over again.
Okay. I was just wondering.
Any other council comments?
I do have one more.
Mr. Lindy?
Through you to the town attorney. If we do not take action on hiring a town manager, does the assistant town manager that's in place become, by default, the interim town manager?
No.
It's still an appointment by the town council.
Because the charter doesn't allow for that, it doesn't call for that. It calls for you all to expeditiously appoint an interim town manager.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. President.
Yes, Ms. Ellenberg.
Now, we know we have some other candidates for this interim position.
We're not having that discussion right now. We're just discussing the ad hoc committee.
All right. I would like other candidates to be on the next agenda. That's all I have to say. I realize it's out of order.
The motion on the floor right now is the composition of the ad hoc committee to be five members, four council members, and one Bridgewater representative of the PR School Committee. We had a motion and a second. If there's no- and is there any further discussion? I will move for a roll call vote.
I have one more. When you say from the school, can we have, like, the vice principal of the high school rather than the committee?
There's going to be an appointment made by the town manager from-
But we could say someone besides on the committee because I know Mr. Tim Fitzgerald was on it. But could we ask, like, we want to recommend that the vice principal?
We're gonna- again, it's up to the town manager to make that appointment. And he's obviously have to have a discussion with that individual.
I will say, though, on your motion, I believe committees are limited to citizens of the town of Bridgewater. So, if you're saying school committee member, it has to be a school committee member that is a citizen of the town of Bridgewater.
That's what I said. Bridgewater- Bridgewater member of the-
I didn't hear that.
Bridgewater member, yes. Yeah, Bridgewater member only, yes.
Okay.
Roll call vote, please.
Council Robinson?
Ms. McKinnon?
Oh, sorry. Council McKinnon? I was gonna go back. Council McKinnon?
Yes.
Council Robinson?
Yes.
Council Ellenberg?
No.
Council Murphy?
Abstain.
Council Perry?
Yes.
Council Lindy?
No.
Council Chase?
Yes.
Council Strickles?
Yes.
And Council Ms. McGrath?
Yes.
Six yes, one no, and one abstain.
And abstain is a no.
Is a no, okay.
I thought there were two nos.
Two nos.
And an abstain.
My apologies.
In abstain is a no. Under our charter.
So, it's six-three.
Okay. So, based on that roll call, the motion carries for an ad hoc of five members. So, we will have Mr. Dutton work on making those appointments, and those appointments will be made at the next meeting for ratification by the town council.
And unless there's a motion, otherwise, they should be appointed individually.
And we'll do it-
One by one.
All right, we'll do it individually. We'll make-
Until you have the full composition that you're looking for.
All right, very good. We'll make that notation. All right. That being said, so, the next steps as far as town manager recruitment, I mean, this was one big step that we got done here tonight. So, I thank the council for the discussion and the vote on it. Again, so now, we will charge that, once it's formed, the ad hoc committee to, again, meet and to establish the direction of how we are going to start the process of hiring the town manager. More than likely, like I said, with an outside firm that would come in and bring candidates to the council to be reviewed, to the ad hoc committee to be reviewed. And again, they would also meet with the council, go over what we're looking for as far as qualities of a town manager and the process that that would entail, as well as, like I said, setting up public sessions to gather public input from the citizens of Bridgewater. But again, we gotta get that put together, and we'll obviously try to get that done at the next meeting. And then again, going back to- we will go back to the appointment situation for the interim at the next meeting, where we'll have any- again, any interested candidates. I want to put their name up for it, as well as, you know, we'll have it all on the agenda, and we'll have presentations, we'll have questions. I believe what we'll work on, I think dislike, actually, will be more similar to what we might go through when we're looking to hire the actual town manager for the future, is we will have a Q and A session, but we'll have to have appropriate questions, standard questions asked across the board. And we'll try and get, you know, each council with a particular question that'll streamline the process, and we'll try and get that all in place before the next meeting. Uh, yes, Ms. Lindy.
Would we have the materials ahead of the meeting to review the resumes and?
Resumes, we're asked to be submitted by 10:00 a.m. Friday. So, if the council secretary can get those out to the counselors once they're submitted-
Friday would be good.
Friday at 10:00 a.m. It's the deadline to submit because she has to get the agenda posted to- for the public. So, after that, if we can get copies of that sent to all the councils, that would be great. Thank you, Ms. Lindy.
What happens if there's 15 applicants?
Then we'll have 15 applicants to go through. We're gonna have a long meeting.
So, you may have to break it up into multiple meetings depending?
We'll see how many applicants.
Okay.
Again, there's always the potential to-
I just want to make clear your process because people who are applying should understand whatever the process is.
Yep.
So-
Yep, I agree, Ms. Rollins.
So, you're going to be interviewing all people that come or submit?
As long as, if it's a manageable number, we'll try and get it all done that evening. If it's, like you say, 15 and it's impossible to interview all those candidates, we'll have to set up a second meeting to interview the rest and, from there, take a vote on those particular candidates.
Let's ask, did we vote on that? Didn't, right? Do we need to vote on that?
No, you just- you postponed-
I just- I postponed that.
You postponed the conversation of hiring someone or Blythe talking tonight, and I think-
But I mean the deadline, the process. What about that?
No, you didn't vote on it. And honestly, it seems pretty informal to me, and I would prefer that you do it in a formal form and you have a vote on it and you have an order that comes before you all or you have a process that you all have voted on. I said this at the last meeting, that if you're going to do the appointment of an interim town manager in some methodical way, you should have a process that's spelled out because people that are applying don't know what to expect. They don't know what they should submit. They don't know. So, to me, I think it's premature to make that decision today. I think you should have a vote on exactly what that process looks like. It should come in the form of an order so that you're actually debating something before the body, and it should be in writing because you're talking about someone applying for a job. And I think that's really important. It's as important to you all as it is to the people applying, right? So, I think I would bring it before- I would bring it back. I'd put it on the next agenda. I'd bring it back before you all with someone being a sponsor of some proposed measure. And unfortunately, it- you're gonna probably have to have another meeting after that to, you know, get it done. But I just- I think this is very important, and I think your process needs to be tight.
Okay. All right. So, that being said, what we'll do then is we'll put the appropriate steps on the next agenda that will establish the process for hiring the interim. Again, time is of the essence, so we're gonna have to, you know, expedite this as quickly as possible. I will, as far as posting of a deadline to respond, how would you recommend doing that outside of putting it all in the order or you should all go in the order first and then once the order? But again, are we going through a process, first reading, second reading?
Yeah, you're going through a process. And that's, unfortunately, if you can't agree on appointments, you have to have a process, right? I know that you don't like that. I know that's not efficient. I understand that. However, you guys are in a situation where you're clearly not agreeing on everything. So, if you're not agreeing on things and you can't have unanimous consent or even consent, then I think you really should outline a process. And I think that's fair to all of you, and I think that's fair to the people applying. And I think that's probably where you're at. And then we're gonna have to just deal with it as it goes.
All right. We'll look into probably then two additional meetings before Mr. Dutton leaves in order to get the two meetings in, postage, posting it, and the process established. Mr. Lindy.
So, on that point, through you to the town council, I agree with you 100% on that. Should we also have the criteria for the applicants that we want them to apply for the job to meet?
Yeah. So, the way that this typically works is there's a- if you go through a process, you have like a search firm, like your ad hoc committee will likely engage in, and they do like a posting, right? And then they get the resumes and everything comes in. You're taking that on yourself through the process you're creating. So, what I would recommend is someone propose some order. That order is the process by which, I mean, you could even propose an ordinance that, you know, this is the process by which we find an interim town manager. And go through the process. Go through the legislative process. Debate it. Figure out what you want that process to look like. Because I get the sense that if any one of you says this is what the process should look like, you may not all be in agreement with that. And so, the most transparent way to address those issues is to legislate them. So, that- I know that's a longer process. I get that. But I think if you all are worried about transparency and you all are worried about, you know, making sure that everyone's heard, the best way to do it is by way of legislation.
Okay.
Ms. Robinson.
Thank you, Mr. President. One thing I would like to suggest as part of this process, if that is what we're gonna deem, and actually regardless, I think that would be really beneficial. I agree that we need criteria. I also think that because there are a lot of relatively new counselors and also for the benefit of the public, it'd be really important to make sure that we extract all of the necessary information out of the town charter and administrative code in understanding what is the role and expectation of a town manager for our own education purposes, for the benefit of the public as well. And then we move into what is the criteria and the attributes that we're looking for that map up also to the expectations of the position. So, I'd like to recommend that.
The charter actually lists it.
Yeah.
Right.
And I get that. I'm saying like-
Oh, no, no. I'm just saying for your sake, so you guys know.
Yeah, proactively making sure that it's part of our agenda, it's reviewed, it's made public. Yes, the charter's available to the public, but it's also, yeah.
No, of course.
Yes, Ms. McGrath.
I agree with Council Robinson. So, in the charter, under the town manager appointment, it says the town council may, from time to time, establish additional qualifications as deemed necessary and appropriate. I'd like to propose that we put project manager on it, that they either have experience being a project manager or an education with all the things we're doing. I think that's- and we can look at Main Street and see what a failure that is without a project manager initiating the whole thing.
So, yeah, I think, but that's for your debate at the next session.
That's for- we'll debate again, but again, that's, I'm sure you're looking for that quality in the permanent town manager that we're looking to hire.
And what now? I mean, we don't know how long. We don't know how long we're gonna have. At least six months.
Well, we have, according to the charter, six months.
So, it wouldn't hurt to have at least some experience.
I agree with you with the most experience. You know, the more experience a candidate has to do the interim position, the better we will be, yes.
There's a lot of projects going on in town.
Mm-hmm. Yes, that is true. Yes, Ms. Lindy.
Is there a current actual job description for the town manager and the interim town manager? Is it just the language in the charter?
I believe it's the language in the charter.
It's the language in the charter.
So, using that as criteria to evaluate, you know, a potential interim town manager, that would be the start, I would imagine.
I don't think it addresses what Ms. McGrath just said.
Just- Mr. Chase.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just on that point, I think that that's going to be largely the function of the professional search firm in their vetting of candidates. They're certainly not going to put forward a candidate who is unfamiliar with the role of town manager in a Massachusetts municipality. So, part of that's really going to be done for us. It's what we're paying for.
Correct. Thank you, Mr. Chase. Again, guys, I mean, if this is the avenue that we want to go down, this is the avenue that we can go down. I mean, the legwork here is finding the permanent town manager. If you want to recreate the whole process and finding just the interim town manager, we're creating twice the amount of the work. Again, you know, it could be a simpler approach or it can be a more complicated approach. Seems like we're looking to go with a more complicated approach.
Mr. President?
Yes, Ms. McGrath, Ms. Ellenberg.
Yes. At present, Blythe, Ms. Robinson is at, correct, is at our assistant town manager position.
She's the interim assistant town manager, yes.
Right. So, could she not carry us through and we don't need to do the search for the interim because she is acting as interim as the assistant town manager and we do a proper process for the main town manager? I think that makes more sense than duplicating the process.
No, I don't-
I don't think you're wrong from a practical standpoint, but the charter requires the appointment of an interim town manager. That's the issue. The charter actually requires it.
Right. And that's a town council appointment.
That's a town council appointment.
So, through you, Mr. President, to the town council?
That's all, Lindy.
So, Mr. Dutton appointed Blythe as assistant town administrator?
Hired, yes.
Hired?
Yes.
When, is there an end term on that?
Do you have a contract?
So, she's an Atwell employee.
Okay.
Yes, Ms. Murphy.
Ms. President, I will volunteer to take the lead, to type up the order for the interim town manager process. I will be willing to meet with all of my counselors over the next couple of days to get this order in line with how everybody's input, you know, taking into account everybody's input.
Okay.
And have it ready to go for next week.
Sounds like that would simplify the process. So, thank you. We'll definitely do that. Any other- Ms. Robinson.
I'm not sure if this is the appropriate time to mention or offer this, but I think one of the, obviously, most pervasive themes is the- our community wants to have input. They want to have say. I wanted to propose, and again, if this is- if I should hold this for another time, I think it'd be really important to have a survey in, you know, different kind of individual focus groups and things like that to get input at particular times, so I'd be happy to help with that.
Well, again, I think if we bring in a firm to do that for the hiring of the permanent town manager, that will probably be engaged with that firm.
Oh, that they could conduct a community survey?
I believe that's- I mean, I'm not 100%, but I think that's part of what they do.
Okay. Great.
And I think you all, yeah, they almost always do, but you all are probably gonna have open sessions during that process, I would guess.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? All right, seeing none. So, again, we will, thank you, Ms. Murphy. We'll work on the order for that for the next meeting to establish process, and we will review that as a council at the next meeting. And then with that, the details will be for submittal for interest and resume production for that. Very good. All right.
Mr. President?
So, as far as the- was there another- Ms. Strickles, I'm sorry.
Is there a way for us to establish, knowing this now, we're probably going to need additional meetings?
Mm-hmm.
Can we get notice on those additional meetings since today was a Wednesday versus a Tuesday?
Yep. Now, we'll- through the town council clerk, we'll make sure all, you know, appropriate parties can be on those days and get those dates out, definitely by the next meeting.
On that point, can we just- can we just maybe decide to meet for the next X number of Tuesday nights?
Well, again, I just- I will, you know, I just gotta confirm with the town manager, the secretary, make sure just all the- I mean, again, obviously, the goal is if we're meeting on the 13th, we're probably looking to meet on the 20th and the 27th.
That's all I'm looking to do.
Yep.
Yeah, I think just some of us need more notice work-wise than, like, a couple days.
Well, again, it looks like the way this is going, we're gonna need the 20th and the 27th to post and to have a second reading and then establish a procedure. We need to make a decision by the 27th because town manager's leaving on the 4th, and that's right before Labor Day weekend.
Well, you're making a decision on what the process is for the interim town manager.
Again, that's what I'm saying, you're right. But again, that's- we need to have it done before, you know, hopefully before Michael leaves.
Right. That doesn't mean you'll have an interim town manager when Michael leaves. It just means you'll have a process to find the interim town manager.
So, on that point, through you to the town council, who is the town manager if Michael leaves and we haven't appointed an interim?
Yeah, it's always- so, Michael can assign someone essentially. It's probably, probably Blythe at that point, at least for if we have things that need to be signed by someone in that role. Hopefully, we don't have a lot of things come up in that time period. But- and hopefully also, you all have someone in place quickly thereafter, so. But we- usually, we would defer certain things like the signing of settlements or contracts or things that an interim, a truly appointed interim town manager would sign, and we would be only addressing the things day in and day out that we have to address. There are plenty of things that we all have to sign on a daily basis that aren't impactful in the way that certain things that you all wouldn't want to have your town manager do, so.
Thank you.
So, Blythe, through you, Mr. President, so Blythe can manage the store for us in the meantime while we get our act together. the meantime while we get our act together. Thank you.
If she wants to. That's up to her.
Okay, so that ends discussions. I will now ask to go with citizens' comments. So any citizen who would like to come up and speak? Again, to reiterate Massachusetts' open meeting law requirements, discussions will not take place during public comment periods. If appropriate, any responses to questions or concerns will be given by the town manager at a future town council meeting. Please state your name and address and keep it to three minutes, please. Mrs. Hanson.
Janet Hanson, Pleasant Street. I just have a question, I didn't really hear if this is the case, but when you apply for a job, you, I know you're asking people to put a resume in by 10 o'clock, I don't know if that changed, I couldn't follow. But if you're asking for resumes, is there a job opening listed on the website? I mean, when you go to any company, there's a job, but what, how do they know, how do people know what they're applying for? How do they even know that it's opening to put a resume? So I think you need to put a job description in the website, town website, and say, "We have a job opening, this is what we're looking for," and then what the job description is. How else are you gonna get resumes? People are just gonna blindly putting in. So I didn't hear that that was a possibility or that was even being done. The other thing I'm concerned, I'm disappointed on the vote of just five. I thought there would be more discussion on, or motions of, because I know there's some objections about having more or what's involved, and no one objected to doing the five with four town council and one school committee member. I'm just concerned, who picks of the nine? Who, is it the town manager that picks the four? And would the town council, after he picks, be able to have any discussion to switch it up? Or is it a done deal for the town manager? I'm unclear on that, so I appreciate when you do the comments after our comments, if you can clarify that, that would be great. I'm just disappointed on the mix on, for the ad, you know, how you're gonna decide this, but you need a job description. If you're gonna ask for resumes, you need to put a job description so people know what they're applying for, and I didn't hear that that was anywhere in there, so that's something you have to consider. So there was a whole lot of other things. I do want citizens to be able to follow this a little bit better, so that's my comments, get the job descriptions for both. Thank you.
Thank you, Janet. Anybody else?
Nope.
Please come on up.
Keith Beal, Tenfield Crest Drive. Big decision you have. You talked about having some open meetings to allow. I think it's very important to get feedback from citizens. I don't necessarily agree that citizens should have been on the committee because I don't know how we, you would have reached a decision on what citizen to put on there. It would have slowed it down if 100 of us showed up and said we want to be on the committee, so. But I do think feedback is important. When you schedule those meetings that you're gonna ask for that feedback, I suggest that you do one after evening like this for people who work and one on a weekend. One of the things is that there's a lot of meetings that you guys hold that are 3:00 PM on a Tuesday, and there's a lot of people that can't make a meeting on a 3:00 PM on a Tuesday. So that's the one suggestion I would make. Secondly, it's absolutely your job to offer questions to town council. I don't think that we should be arguing with the interpretation of the law when our town, when the town council makes that interpretation. If we don't have confidence in what he's doing, we're hiring him to give us legal advice, and it's absolutely your job to question what you're doing and what, what needs to be done to do your job to run this town, but when he gives that advice, it's not to be, we shouldn't be arguing with him. If we don't think that this gentleman is qualified to give the advice that we want, then we should get another lawyer. I run a law firm, I'm not a lawyer, I babysit lawyers all day, but he's very confident in what answers he's given. I've listened to him many times. But I'm not a lawyer, I wouldn't question, I may have a question for him, but I would never question what he says, and I don't think it's a good look for us, I don't think it's a good look for the town. And again, you have the right, that if you're not happy with the advice that you're getting, that you can change lawyers at any time. But I think it's important that you ask questions, let him interpret the law, and then move on from that. Thanks.
Thank you, Keith. Anybody else? Will you step up?
Ray, Jim, and Alvin Short, I'm sorry, I know you're doing, working very hard, but sitting here, I couldn't help thinking of, I think it was Bismarck, that said, "Citizens shouldn't be told how laws and sausage are made." That's supposed to be funny, but.
Thank you, Ray. Anybody else like to come up and speak? Mr. Moore.
David Moore, 54 Flag Street. Just as we would not even consider hiring somebody or closing out a town manager or closing out the fiscal year without a financial audit, and I know this is something that's been going on every year, and things have been looking good, but at this point, I think just as important is to have a performance audit, some type of, a way of assessing how things have been happening over the last five years to help identify goals for the search committee and things that we should be looking for in a, in a new town manager, his strengths. There may be some underlying things that we really need help on, but we should really be having that type of an audit, and that can be done through the citizen input, through department head input and so forth, just to identify all of the shortcomings and possibly the strengths that have happened over the last five years. Or maybe you want to go back to Mr. Dutton's whole term of 12 years, but there should be a performance audit, in my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Anybody else? Come on up, Gina.
Gina Gascioni, 35, Bala, excuse me, Bala. First, I just want to commend all of you, including Blythe and Attorney Rollins for the hard work put into this, this challenge. I have heard rumblings, and I'm not sure if it came from council people or who, that interim town, excuse me, the interim town manager should not be considered for the permanent town manager. I don't know the thoughts of the council on that, but I'd like to suggest if that is a thought, that it be put out to the job description that Janet spoke about, just so people, if they put their name for the interim, they'll know whether it can be or cannot be considered. Just a suggestion.
Thank you, Gina. Anybody else? Going once, going twice. All right, thank you for those that came up and made comments. All right, we will start with council comments. I will start with Ms. McGrath.
Thank you, Mr. President. Today, August 7th, is Purple Hot Day. It is a day to remember and honor the men and women who either wounded or lost their lives on the battlefield. Bridgewater is a purple hot town, though I'm not sure if there are any signs stating this as you enter our town. Also, I'd like to request that the POW flag be placed on the town flagpole as today's Purple Hot Day, Friday, September 20th being National POW MIA Day, and Monday, November 11th is Veterans Day. This is something close to my heart. My father and his two brothers served in the military. His youngest brother, at the age of 19 years old, became a POW in North Korea. Our family has not yet received his dog tags nor his bones. The U.S. Department POW and MIA Agency states more than 8,000 American personnel are missing from previous conflicts and 38,000 estimated to be recoverable. It is important that we do not forget our fellow Americans who have not come home and those who have served. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McGrath. Ms. Strickles.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to thank everyone that came tonight. Having a full room and ensuring that we have citizen engagement not only doesn't go unnoticed, but it makes our job as counselors easier when we are accessible to you. So thank you to everyone who came, and for those who had to leave, thank you as well. I want to congratulate the Bridgewater 12s on an amazing trip to the New England Regionals. They've made our town and this community extremely proud, and I know that they were super jazzed to receive all of the love that they got from the first responders and everything on their way out of town, so thank you for that as well. And thank you to the constituents that reached out to me directly. Like I mentioned, I have at least 45 individual conversations with constituents about the town manager issue, so I appreciate all of you engaging with me, enlightening me on your concerns, and having an open ear, because with open ears, we achieve a whole lot more than when we don't listen to each other. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Strickles. Mr. Chase.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would just like to thank not only those of you who are here in attendance this evening, but certainly all the people who corresponded with me personally. I was able to return responses to several people, but by no means was I able to send a complete response in reply to each and every person, and I really didn't think it appropriate to just do a, do kind of a quick copy and paste of the same remarks because all of the comments were really very individual and very thoughtful, and I think people put a lot of time into, in some cases, fairly lengthy discussions about the topic that we've begun to discuss tonight. So I do want to thank people for that, and to the extent I can, I will continue to respond to those who, to whom I have not yet done so, but thank you all for that.
Thank you, Mr. Chase. Mr. Lindy.
Kind of echoing the comments of some of my fellow counselors, I appreciate all the people that attended the meetings. I appreciate Vice President Paul Murphy for having open meetings that he allowed me and others to sit in on. Some of them were groups, some of them were individuals. I will state officially for the record that there was a vote taken. I was not on the winning side. I think the process that we're going through is flawed process. I do not think that outside folks that are not members of this council should be on a search committee that's limited, and I know what I heard from the majority of the residents sitting in on those meetings, that they want involvement in the selection process. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lindy. And Mr. Murphy.
Yeah, I just want to thank folks for coming out over the past couple of days that we, that I held the open forum meetings, so thank you for those folks, thank you for the folks that emailed me directly. I also tried to respond to nearly every email I got, and I think as Counselor Chase said, they were very personalized, so I took all that into notes and then tried to summarize for folks again today from the meetings and emails that I received, so folks could see the themes that were happening. I also want to say that I think it's important that we have a clear and concise, and maybe slower process to hire our interim town manager, because I think it's an important decision, and this person will have nearly all the powers that a normal town manager would have. We have no timetable for how long that may be, so I think it's important that we just have a clear process for that, and I think it has nothing to do with the individuals that, you know, may have been appointed or were suggested or are currently serving. I think it's just about having a clear process that can be shared with everybody, that's transparent, and that makes sense, right? So that was my intent tonight, and I hope that was heard. Thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Ms. Ellenberg.
Yes, first, I want to thank Mr. Paul Murphy for having those forums where citizens came, and yes, we heard a lot about how citizens want to be heard and their concerns need to be listened to. So I just wanted to say thank you for the citizens for coming out, and thank you for the input for those of you that went to the forums. And on just a ministerial matter, I would just like to say that publicly, I would like to be able to get things on the agenda. Now, the agenda sometimes is run by the town manager or the president of the council, but I do think that everyone who is elected on this council should be able to get matters on the agenda. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Ms. Ellenberg. Ms. Robinson.
I realize this is comments, but I believe every single counselor has the ability to submit agenda items to the president and the secretary.
Point of information, many have been submitted, not accepted.
Ms. Robinson's time to speak.
Sorry, I, so, I just want, I definitely echo the sentiments of appreciation for anyone and all the people who've reached out, met with folks in person, had conversations, text messages, all that good stuff, so I just want to continue to reiterate, you know, I can't speak for everyone else, but it feels like it's a shared common goal of making sure that we do have community input wherever we can, where it's possible, so thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Robinson. Mr. McKinnon.
I just want to echo all the sentiments that everyone's been saying about all the citizens coming up. This is good, I like seeing the room full. It's very good to see the room full, actually, because it's usually empty. Second, I want to thank Paul Murphy for everything that he's doing and taking the role on trying to make everything easier next week. When it comes to my emails, I'm about four or five days behind because I was up in New Hampshire, and to get service up there, I gotta drive 30 minutes, so I just got home 30 minutes before the meeting. I'll be reading emails and trying to catch up with that. Then I want to echo Sonia's comments on the Bridgewater 12 league. On my way home, this was me the whole time, watching the boys get a-
Did they win today?
Nope, they got this close. They were one play away, they were on third base in the bottom of the sixth, there were a few calls that didn't go our way, and they got this close, but just a message, a message to those kids, tough times never last, how people do. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McKinnon. I hadn't heard the result of what happened today, so. Very sad, they fought hard and they did a great job. I definitely want to plan and special recognition for, for those guys when they come back to town, so possibly at the next meeting, I hope to make a special presentation, a proclamation for the, for the team. But not only the 12s, but a lot of the 11s, the 10s, the 9s, the 8s even, I think they all had great summer seasons, so I want to give a shout out to all those teams and congratulate them on their summer success. Again, thank you to all the citizens coming out here. Again, it's a difficult process, it's a, again, none of us have gone through this before, I have not gone through this before. We're trying to make a tough task as easy as possible. Ultimately, we want as much public input as possible, we want the town to run as smoothly as possible with that, whatever, with whatever interim town manager we put in, so if we're going to go with the process that we started discussing tonight, we will go through that process and get someone in position as soon as possible. Again, the ultimate goal is to, to find the right permanent town manager to lead the town and to work with the council and to continue to make Bridgewater as great as it is. And that's my goal, it's been my goal always is, is being on the council, and certainly my goal here is being president of the council, to continue to lead the group of us in this process forward, in this best way forward. So that's all I have. With that, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
I'll move.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned, and we do not need executive session this evening.
We do or do not?